Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the village board meeting at 6:00 PM on August 26th. If I could have our clerk Simski take the role.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Brady? Trustee Gruzzle?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Simonovic?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Village manager May?
Here.
Assistant village manager Parker? I know he's here somewhere.
He's here somewhere, okay.
I'm sorry, he's absent. He is absent. The mayor is here.
On via Zoom, so, okay, if everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't believe we have anybody here for open forum. So we'll get right into reports, and the first report is the mayors.
Good evening. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. I am not in attendance tonight. I cannot decide over the meeting because you need to physically be in village hall. I have COVID for the second time. I had COVID in January and was vaccinated in March and got COVID again. So this is a good indication of how important it is to mask and to follow the orders of the health department. It's not a fun thing to have, and I've got to quarantine now until next week. I'm just hoping those I came in contact with, including my three grandkids over the weekend, do not contract it. So I'm not ashamed to say I have COVID, but I just want everybody to know it is serious. And then, please, follow the health department's orders. And at this point, I'm going to ask manager May to please update everyone on the governor's order, orders that will go in effect on Monday. Manager?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. And the orders are the new, you know, executive order that was issued today, and there was a press conference earlier this morning. But we have the governor ordered, for all these reasons that the mayor just spoke to, in the high positivity and the spike that we're all, you know, been experiencing pretty much since early July, is on the climb. And the executive order today is, there was two parts to it. One of it affects schools administrators, you know, and different grades have different restrictions. But the mandatory, that was actually a mandatory vaccination application for educators. And then for the mask mandate, was, today was a reinforcement of the mask recommendation that has been in place for the last couple of weeks that we've already been following. So for all of us, the, for indoor attendance, regardless of your vaccination status, indoor attendance, when what's called indoor public places, masking is required by all. And that is certainly the stores and the public place, public places, any place that has, where the public's expected to be or is invited to be, you know, in attendance. Here, this is a public meeting, so that is an example. So 100% of us have that requirement while attending and participating in that meeting. This village hall as a workplace is different. The public place during the day is just the front lobby, so, because the public is restricted. And then, but then we do have our own personnel policies for the people that work in the building and when you're in your own workspaces versus when you're not. So here, we've, I guess I wanted to point out, we've been, already been honoring that for just over two weeks now already. And that's one in one place, and that's all effective on Monday. And lastly, I'm just pointing out, because I'm, you know, I took it off for, you know, easier to understand, maybe, you know, and that's when you're in your own workplace and the protections and the distancing can be maintained, that is allowed to be removed. But otherwise, if you're not presenting or, you know, not participating, it's, the expectation is that the face mask remains. So, thank you, mayor.
All right, thank you. And I failed to mention one thing, and as manager May and I think the board knows, my family's probably as cautious as anybody when it comes to the virus, and I got it. So, and I haven't been in too many public places. But at this point, I'd ask chief Riley if he can give us an update on the COVID situation.
Thank you, mayor, and hope you're feeling well soon and back in village hall. So as we continue to see an uptake and uptick in COVID-19 cases, not only across the country, along with the state of Illinois, but we continue to see the uptick right here in DuPage County. The numbers of this afternoon are 98,444 cases in DuPage County, along with 1,407 deaths. Here in Westmont, we're at 2,490 cases, along with 89 deaths, and we've had one new death in the last 14 days. We also have 27 new confirmed COVID cases in Westmont in the last 14 days. So again, we continue to see the increase in hospitalizations at Good Samaritan, Hinsdale, LaGrange. Our ICU availability is at 25%. Now, there are numerous models that are out there that are predicting that cases are going to continue to peak. Hospitalizations are going to continue to occur through October 1st. So again, we need to be ready for that. And the way to be ready for that is to continue to wear face coverings while out in public venues, stores, restaurants. Please try to maintain social distancing whenever possible. Lastly, continue great hand washing. We are going to continue to see these numbers rise over the next month, month and a half. So trustee Nero or mayor Gunter, I'd be happy to answer any questions or any of the board that you may have.
Thanks, chief. Part of my report is asking chief Gunther, he's got several items he wants to address the board tonight. Chief Gunther?
Thank you, mayor. We have a few items to talk about at the police department. We are still taking the applications for our citizens' police academy, which you can find on the Westmont Police Department Facebook page or the village website. And we have recently posted a press release for children returning back to school. District 201, District 60, and Holy Trinity are now all back in school. And kind of in line with something we've been doing or do on an annual basis, when school comes back into session is increase our patrols in the residential neighborhoods. So manager May had asked me to brief the board on our most recent round of targeted patrols in the residential neighborhoods, which we conducted from August 11th through the 26th. And really, it's kind of a unique year because with COVID last year and having lockdowns nationally and locally, there were nationally billions of miles less driven by the motoring public, yet traffic fatalities increased on a national level, up 7% to something north of 38,000 traffic fatalities in 2020 over 2019. And, you know, we know that people are creatures of habit and that when there's open roadway and there's, there's nothing prohibiting you from driving fast, you, you increase your speed. So we are making an effort now to re-educate drivers, to change their habits, to lower their speeds, especially on our side streets, which we know are used a lot in a cut-through type fashion. So within the last two weeks, the officers from 7:00 AM to 8:30 AM, targeting the morning rush hour and times when, when kids are in or heading to school, the officers conducted 57 traffic stops, nearly 60% for disobeying the stop signs and 28% for speeding. The, the balance of that percentage were for cell phone violations, equipment violations, and other traffic control signals that are not stop signs. We issued, 61% received written warnings to hopefully modify their behavior, and 39% received actual traffic citations, and we had two arrests out of those traffic stops for traffic-related issues. The offenders or the people that were stopped, 43% are Westmont residents and 30% were DuPage residents in neighboring communities. So nearly 75% of everybody we stopped live locally. And so that's sort of the numbers on that. The last time that we did this was literally right before we were locked down in 2020, between March 4th and March 16th, where we had similar results, except we had 61% speeding violations to 26% stop signs and 13% all other types of traffic violations. And back then, 48% were Westmont residents that were stopped and 33% in that DuPage County regional area. So we, you know, we want to emphasize that kids are back in school, people are out and about. You know, the pandemic definitely had more people out more than ever. I mean, people that probably normally wouldn't be outside were enjoying the outdoors because that's the only place they could go when we were on lockdown. And if we head back that direction and the weather stays good, you know, I want everybody, you know, motoring public to be well aware that kids are out, parents are out, and to be aware of all those things. So with that, we put out a press release a couple of days ago on back-to-school driving safety, which is available on the website, which has some safety tips. And so that's that topic. Any questions on any of those numbers? I know I went through it pretty quick, but just to know that we're out and about and we are heavily targeting the side streets and the residential neighborhoods. I would like to thank the WSEC for extending squad car, or extending cruise nights for one more week to accommodate squad car night, which will be a week from tonight. And we have over 50 squad cars that are confirmed. We have a couple of other things, maybe a couple surprises that are in the works. And we're looking forward to a great night, so please come out, bring your families. Plenty of fun to be had. We'll do the parade at the end of the evening. And I think there was, and then on a really, really good note, we formally cop on top, which is now called Coffee for Champions. We had that last Friday, and we broke a record for raising money. So we brought in 5,000, roughly $5,400. So we beat our previous record by $200, and all that money goes to Illinois Special Olympics. And we're very proud of all the personnel that, and volunteers that helped, and then all the village staff and all the community support for that endeavor. We're very happy both. And for the first time, the North Side almost outdid the South Side, which is unique because South Side has a drive-thru and North Side does not, but they were.
South Side has the chief, too.
Well, I move back and forth. It was very hot that day, so I didn't want to. I spread myself around so I can hit some air conditioning in between the South and North Side.
Your route cost me a fortune. She talked me into more stuff than I needed.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks, chief. At this point, I'd ask Larry McIntyre if he could take over and talk about all the 100th activities, anniversary activities that got planned.
Thank you, mayor. I have several items to go over. First, coinciding with our 100th anniversary year-long celebration, the village has organized three open houses for our various village departments. The police department conducted theirs earlier in August, but we have two more coming up. One will be the public works, and this will be the first time that the public will be able to enter and get a look at the inside of their new facility, and that's going to be September 25th. And then the fire department will be having their open house on October 2nd. More details will be on the website. And the next item I have here is, we've been talking about this for a while, the 100th anniversary commemorative license plates. Those are on sale, and you can order those via the website. But you have only about one more week to do so, because we're going to be closing those sales off. And the expectation is that we will be receiving that order by the end of September, and then we'll be passing those out to everybody who's ordered those. And for people who choose to, they can have those displayed on their cars for the months of October and November. It's only a 60-day actual use on your vehicle, but then, of course, it's a keepsake for more after that. The next item, I wanted to talk about our interest, the 100th anniversary committee's interest in trying to solicit photos and stories from the community. If anybody has photo, old photos from Westmont yesteryear, as well as stories of Westmont and specifically CUSD 201, we ask you to contact us at communications@westmont-il.gov. Those items will be used for two purposes. One is a historical video that we're working on, which will also feature over a dozen interviews with longtime residents, and that's turning out to be a great project. But then additionally, District 201 is working on a written history of their school district. And so photos and stories will be used in both of those projects. And then the final item I wanted to talk about is the actual anniversary date, which is going to be Wednesday, November 10th. That's the actual date of our 100th anniversary of incorporation. And we've been, you know, all of our planning for 100th anniversary has, has kind of been, you know, difficult due to COVID, you know, we weren't sure what we could do. And now that, you know, things are kind of returning to, you know, possibly being a little bit more restrictive, we still have to be mindful in our planning. But we think we're going to, we're planning to move forward with an outdoor event in front of village hall on Wednesday, November 10th. And we're still working on the details of the schedule, but some of the items that will be included on that day will be the dedication of Addington Plaza, which is the plaza next to the train station. We're probably going to be putting up historical displays and asking people from the community to come down and share their stories of Westmont yesteryear, as well as look at the different displays. We will be debuting our 100th anniversary video. Our 100th anniversary mascot is Garrett, and people can take photos of Garrett. We plan to have a 100th anniversary live trivia contest, and this is probably going to be very well received because the prizes for this contest will be the 100th anniversary Beanie Babies. We'll have food, we'll have refreshments, we're working on those types of details. We're going to have our final presentation of our historical mural project, and this final edition of the mural will be the future of Westmont. And so local artist Fanny Moy will be unveiling that. We're also going to be debuting something that we've been referring to as the Legacy Awards. And there's going to be two different sections of the Legacy Awards. The chamber is going to reveal all of the businesses that have served Westmont for 50 or more years. And they, they don't have to be a current business, but just as long as they were in town for 50 or more years, we're putting together a list of those businesses, so we'll be making that announcement. And then we're also going to be listing what we refer to as Legacy Award families. And so we'll be making a reveal of that, and there's several presentations to be made there. We're very lucky that Jerry Simski has offered to read a 100th anniversary poem. It wouldn't be a Westmont event if we didn't include that, so we're looking forward to that. And then what we're thinking is going to be the finale of the event is going to be the creation of a new time capsule. And so real soon, we're going to be reaching out to community organizations and asking them all to work towards creating a submission that will be placed into the time capsule. And we're going to have a ceremony where each organization will come up, make their presentation, and then it will be put into the time capsule, and then we will bury the time capsule. And then that'll be the end of this ceremony, followed by fireworks, of course. And that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you, Larry. I don't know if anybody has any questions. If not, I'll turn this back over to our presiding mayor, trustee Nero.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, we'll continue on our reports, and clerk Simski?
All right. The Lions Club Labor Day Weekend Backyard BBQ and Carnival is going to be taking place, and I would like Larry Forsberg to come up and tell people about it.
Thank you, clerk Simski, and evening, board members. Everybody's accustomed to the red, white, and barbecue that the Lions Club has had for over 12 years now that was over Memorial Day weekend. Obviously, because of COVID, lots of plans have changed. It's been a very fluid year, so the Westmont Lions Club has planned a Labor Day Weekend, backyard barbecue, and carnival. So let me review the calendar for this event. On Friday, September 3rd, from 4:00 to 10:00 PM, there will be a carnival, food truck vendors and craft vendors available throughout that time period. Saturday's going to be a very busy day, that's going to go from noon until 10:00. We have a carnival, an amateur barbecue competition cook-off, craft vendors and food trucks. We'll also have a band at 6:00 PM, and we will have fireworks at 8:00 PM. By the way, all this is taking place at Ty Warner Park. And then on Sunday, from noon to 8:00, we have the carnival going throughout the day. But wait, there's more. We also have, if you love barbecue food, we are looking for some judges. The assignment would be from 1:30 PM to 4 o'clock on that Saturday at Ty Warner Park. And we have many barbecue competitors that will be coming out amateurs from around the area, and we need some judges to help us determine who's making the best barbecue. So if you're interested, I'll give you Rick Martin's office number. It's 630-960-2600, or you can go to the Westmont Lions Facebook page and get a little bit more information there. But this is going to be a really fun event, all outdoors. We give a big shout-out to the Rotary Club for helping, it's the Westmont Park District for helping make this happen. And this entire weekend and event is in memory of lion Jim Addington, who was the co-founder of the red, white, and barbecue event. So we're doing this in his memory. So come out and join us that weekend at Ty Warner Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Library has, the Westmont Public Library is seeking applications from interested Westmont residents to serve as library trustee. Applications are due by September 3rd and are on the library's website. Phone calls for seniors, this is a new service from the DuPage Senior Citizen Council. Seniors can sign up to receive a friendly call from a volunteer. There is more info on the village website. And I'd like to send my sincere condolences to our deputy liquor commissioner Mulhern on the loss of your mother, and condolences to a very dear friend of mine, Jill Ron, on the loss of her father this week. So we lost some treasured people there. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Brady?
Earlier this evening, we conducted a community development committee. Just a brief recap tonight, we discussed the staffing changes in the community development department. Also discussed Soul Smart, which is future solar panels for the village. Also updating fence permits and looking into processing to adopt new building codes. One item, the September 8th meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission is canceled. A joint meeting will be held between the planning and zoning and the village board will be held in place with the normally scheduled meeting. And last, what Larry wanted to mention also out of chamber of commerce, there's a pet promenade, the ninth annual pet promenade is scheduled for September 19th. This event celebrates education, encourages compassion and awareness between area families and their pets. This year, the event will be on Sunday, September 19th, at Ty Warner Park, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brady. Trustee Little?
I just have a couple of items tonight. The administration finance committee meeting, the next one will be September the 9th at 4:30 PM, right here in this room, and everyone's invited to attend, open and public. Last item that I have is there's only one more art show at cruise night. We've got one set up, and it's at the Mead Kitchen parking lot. So if you want to sign up to be an artist and present your works, please do so. You can sign up at the village website, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barker?
Thank you, trustee Nero. One item this evening, I wanted to just thank the members of the EIC committee that were at the cruise nights last week promoting the food scraps composting program and also talking about all the work and the, you know, kind of final conclusion of the work that was done in conjunction with Claretton Hills on Richmond Gardens. It's really a beautiful site. It went from weeds and scrub and everything else to something that'll be usable for all the communities and educational opportunities. So we're looking forward to that in the future. But thank you to the committee for spending their time down there, talking to the residents. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you, trustee Nero. Couple things, our next fire public safety committee meeting will be October 21st here at village hall at 4:30. Everyone is invited to attend. There is a new prescription drop box. The new drop box is located in the front of, the front lobby of the police-fire facility at 500 North Cass. Residents can now drop off unwanted prescription drugs during business hours. And then the Patriot Day Ceremony. The Westmont Fire and Police are coordinating a September 11th Patriot Day Ceremony, which will be held at the police-fire facility at 500 North Cass. You can find all the details on our website, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, trustee Simonovic?
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment to update everyone on the hiring activities here at the village. We are happy to welcome a temporary planner to the community development department, starting Monday, August 30th. We also have a full-time help desk technician, starting in the IT department on October 4th. The village continues to hire for a couple other positions. You can apply on the village website for part-time permit coordinator in the community development department, as well as a mechanic in the public works department. We are in various stages of the hiring process for the deputy director of planning in the community development department, as well as an administrative assistant to the fire chief in the fire department. So if you're interested in any of the open positions here at the village, that is under the human resources tab on the village website. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and just a few items for myself. Our next public works committee meeting will be September 23rd, 4:30 PM, right here in village hall. And a quick update on our new village fueling center that broke down this week and is scheduled to be completed this fall. Public Works Open House is scheduled for September 21st, 10:00, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the new Public Works facility, 155 East Burlington Avenue. And last, just on a somber note, condolences to both the Mulhern and Ron family. And that is all I have. Let's move right into it. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? I know there's two proclamations we want to.
Two proclamations, one of them, if we could have the, someone could recommend the National Suicide Prevention Month proclamation be removed?
I make a motion to recommend the removal of the suicide prevention proclamation.
Second, Simonovic?
So usually, we don't do even need a motion and a second and a vote for this. If a trustee requests it, it's just removed. So we'll just consider that as a request, not a motion, and we'll move that to the first item of new business.
Okay, and then how about the second one I believe we have on there as well?
It can stay on the consent agenda.
Okay. Manager May, if you could read through the consent agenda?
Thank you. First on the consent agenda, board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held August 12th, 2021. Next is finance ordinance number nine, in the amount of $1,2,179.99. Several purchase orders, first one, Mead Incorporated, $47,874.40.
Several purchase orders. First one, Mead Incorporated, $47,874.40 for a concrete light pole replacement. Next purchase order, Alexander Equipment Company Incorporated, $97,248.18 for a chipper replacement, the wood chipper, branch tree service. Next purchase order, Onyx Networking Corp., $46,197.75. This is the annual Google Workplace Renewal and Device Management. Next purchase order is Foster Coach Sales Incorporated, $300,885. This is a replacement ambulance. Next purchase order is Baxter and Woodman Incorporated, $24,200, and this is for Phase One, which is preliminary engineering study for the Liberty Park Water Main Network Design. All those purchase orders together are $516,405.33. Brings the total of purchase orders, together with Finance Ordinance Number Nine, to $1,518,585.32. The proclamation remaining on the consent agenda is the Westmont Chamber of Commerce Week. Board to Consider a Proclamation Declaring the Week of September 12 through 18, 2021, as Chamber of Commerce Week in Westmont, Illinois, celebrating the work of our Chamber of Commerce provides to our community. Last on the consent agenda under Community Events is a hotel motel grant request for the Lions Club barbecue that we heard the report on. Board to Consider a Motion Awarding a Hotel Motel Grant in the amount of $2,500 to the Westmont Lions Club for the barbecue event. And that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Little? Second, Samanovic.
On the question? Roll call.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Samanovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes. Okay, moving right on to the proclamation we pulled. New business. Manager Mae.
The proclamation and the reason for pulling it is just to give it greater awareness and to read it in full. We do have somebody here representing this proclamation, well, request, but the, I'm going to read through the proclamation first, and then we'll introduce. Whereas September is known globally as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to help raise the visibility of mental health resources, and whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, in 2019, more than 45,000 Americans died by suicide, and an estimated 1.4 million attempted suicide. And whereas, suicide is the 10th-leading cause of death among adults in the U.S., and whereas, global organizations such as Hope for the Day, national organizations such as National Alliance on Mental Illness, and local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services are the front lines of battle to open minds, save lives, and restore hope. And whereas, Westmont is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly support in simply being available to one another, and whereas, every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas, I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors, and to genuinely convey appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate, and whereas, we can all help prevent suicide. Therefore, be it resolved by the Village of Westmont, that the month of September 20, of September 2021, will be designated as Suicide Prevention Action Month in the Village of Westmont. You can start with the motion first, and then we'll-
Great. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, Guzzo.
Okay. Any comments?
We do have guest Bev Schwartz would like to offer some words. If you could introduce yourself again, though, please.
Yeah, hi, I'm Bev Schwartz. I'm here representing Hope for the Day, a nonprofit located in Chicago. So on behalf of everyone at Hope for the Day, thank you for acknowledging suicide as an issue, talking about suicide, and just continuing to have this hard conversation. Westmont has continued to be a place that has started this conversation and continued to share our resources, so thank you for that. Makes me a proud Westmont resident, just being from here, so. So by signing this proclamation, we do have free mental health education that we offer. It's 90 minutes, not too long, so it's free to anyone and everyone and anyone that is willing to come. It is virtual. We are starting to offer it back in person. I also have resources, some at the front desk, but we do give them out at all our events. They have the National Lifelines on them, and a QR code to our resource compass, where you just plug in your zip code, and you can find local resources right in your area, along with a map, and their hours and phone numbers, so you can get right to them. And there's also buttons and stuff there for you to grab. But most importantly, thank you for taking the time, again, to have this conversation, and being the one to start the change, and just remembering that we're all in this together, because crushing stigma is what we're all about. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Nero, we have a copy for her to keep, if you want to present that, and-
Great. Should we do a vote first?
Oh, good point.
Why don't we, I want a quick roll call.
Trustee Brady. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Samanovic.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Give me a second, too. He's over.
Well, thank you for your service and commitment to something that we all need to be a little more aware of, I think, so appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes. Yeah, gotta get the nice views.
Okay, moving on to our next item. B1 permit, therapeutic massage at 15 North Cass. Board to Consider An Ordinance Approving a B1 Development Permit to a Plima Company, DBA Plima Massage Boutique, to operate a therapeutic massage business at 15 North Cass. Director Sylvester.
Hello. If the IT Department could pull up the laptop screen on the television, that would be great. Thank you. The first item is, as was just explained, a request for a B1 permit for a new business to move into our downtown at 15 North Cass. The business is named Plima, and they would provide therapeutic massage therapy, and the business owner is with us tonight, Marina Savage, and she can introduce herself.
Hi, good evening, Board. I'd like to first thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. So I'm here to request a B1 permit. I've been doing massage for, since 1999. I, my strength is in my hands and arms, definitely not in my public speaking abilities, but bear with me, I'll do my best. So I've been doing this for a long time. I've been licensed, and I have always strived to work in a more clinical setting. I went to Soma Institute of Clinical Massage Therapy back in 1999. It had extensive coursework in anatomy and kinesiology. Since then, I've mostly and mainly worked in chiropractic offices with physical, alongside physical therapists. I've also worked at fitness gyms and athletic gyms, things like that. I currently now am employed at the Kohler Water Spots in Bridge. It's upscale, but in all of that, I still try, I still try to do the most therapeutic massage as possible, just so people get the benefits of the work. My mission is to provide high-quality and effective massage, to enhance clients' wellness, and promote health and rejuvenation. So I've used a lot of different massage modalities throughout this time. I have extensive skills with prenatal, myofascial release, trigger point therapy. I help educate clients in effective exercises and stretching that they can do to benefit from these things. So these are some of the modalities I specialized in, and I find trigger point therapy to be the most effective, but I also work, I know that Westmont is like a very senior-friendly community, and that you guys take pride in that, but touch and human touch, touch is very important, for especially that population, just because if they lack that, that human contact and touch, they start, metaphorically, it's almost like wilting, like a flower. Everyone needs that. I mean, even instinctually, if you bump your knee, the first thing you do is rub it. These are just things I want to bring to, like, everyone's, in front of everyone that, you should take care of yourself. In this way, just like a car needs an oil change, your body definitely needs therapeutic massage therapy. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Well, I do, and actually, you know, if Bruce could help, you know, describe the location and where the business would be, and while Bruce is coming up, I wanted to mention that there's two parts to this request, and tonight is only the B1 permit. I sent you a note previously, but there's a separate but tandem process about the license itself that needs to be done. Typically, those will both be on the agenda for the same meeting, but with Mr. Sylvester here tonight, we'll, you know, have this presentation and, you know, any input you have.
You might be able to clarify, too. Yeah, in terms of the location, so the address is 15 North Cass. You're probably familiar with that space. It was a salon at one point. Currently, it's a vacant space. There's not a salon business in there, and Ms. Savage would like to rent a portion, a room, within that salon space. I believe it's about 100 square feet?
Yeah, about 100.
So it would be a space within the larger salon business, which at the moment happens to be unoccupied by a salon business. What you were looking for, Steve, or?
Yeah, so I just background, so if there's any questions.
Steve, do you want to maybe just go over the options for the board, and we can decide how they want to proceed, or how they want to handle that?
Yeah, well, like I just started to describe, it was in a, because, you know, I don't want to, you know, make a comparison, like, if there was a business going in that needed a liquor license. So any business in the downtown, in the central business district, the B1 zoning district, requires a B1 permit just to operate any business. They have to come before you to ask to do it. So that's the only thing on the agenda here tonight. The rest of the background and the process that goes with obtaining or qualifying for the license, the local license itself, is still in process. So normally, these would both be on the meeting at the same time, but, you know, given the timing is, you know, I've already said this part. So your options are to, you know, approve it with the, I guess with the stipulation or the condition that it would be subject to getting the approval of the, ultimately getting the license. You could reject it if you're inclined to do that, or you could have the discussion here today and agree to postpone the item and just vote on it at the same time that the license would be before you, if that makes more sense to you. Any add-on, or?
No, I guess we'll entertain a motion then, on however the board would like to proceed.
I'm in favor of postponing it, just so we could do them both at the same time. So I'm making a motion to postpone this agenda item.
Second? You know, I'll second it only in that we've agreed to support each other, and if Trustee Guzzo feels that it should be postponed and done together, then I'll honor that.
And I, the reason I'm bringing that up for postponing it is I'd like to see them both on the same agenda. So that's the reason I'm bringing it up for a postponement.
So you still have, you have the motion and the second, but you have the option to still discuss it if you wanted to give any feedback tonight, but the technical vote would just be later.
Yeah. Just a quick comment. Trustee Barker put it right. I mean, I think we've always had a good agreement. If a board member wanted to postpone, we mutually agreed, and I don't think it's a negative towards your business by any means. It's just simply two licenses before we'd open anyhow, or two approvals, so, although it might seem like it, I guess, you know, once you're on for both of them, I, you know, I personally don't have any issue with it, so I, you know.
But if you're willing, as you just said, if you want to provide any feedback at this point as to your thoughts, at least as to the B1 permit, you're free to do so.
Yeah. So I would have two questions. One would be, so you've worked in this field, but this is the first time it's a business venture?
Yes, absolutely. So I thought just after 20-plus years in it, I would finally start to build clientele for myself, rather than for the other establishments I've worked for. And everywhere, actually, that I have worked, I've left on good terms. The only reason I thought I should apply for the B1 permit now is just because of all the things and the inspections that go along with the permit. I thought it would maybe hurry it along so that I can open my doors sooner, but whatever you guys feel is most appropriate, I-
And then the other question is, are there any items for sale? You know, it's a TIF district, and if there's no sales tax generated, then it's, you know, I'll say, I would like to have every business in the TIF generate sales tax for the community.
Yeah.
But in this case, if you're not, if it's a service, there's no sales tax.
Yeah, well, I just point, just because everything is brand-new. I wasn't really planning, and because of the limited space, it's about 100, maybe it's 110 square feet tops, I just thought, but usually, like establishments like mine, you would sell things, like there's healing salts and creams, and there could be something that I can pursue in the future. Just initially, I just would really want to build clientele and-
So there's potential for that, like we've had dance studios.
Absolutely, and I mean, I definitely, it's not the end goal to just be in a 100-square-foot space. It's just not with the way, because of the pandemic and everything that's been going, I just don't want to, I don't feel like it's a good time to take a risk on a bigger space or area.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Trustee Nero?
Yes, sir.
The, a couple of comments that, there goes, that there was a therapeutic massage as part of the salon before, and that the owner of the building has future plans for it to expand, and hopefully it creates some sales tax. So really, tonight is just to give feedback as far as are we in agreement that this type of service would be appropriate. We don't have to vote on it, but that way Tom can do all the background before we issue a massage license. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments?
You know, I know that therapeutic massage is a very good thing, especially when people are recovering from injuries and that kind of thing. So yes, I think it's great that you've got, got that background. So thank you very much.
My question was just more so about the space in general, and kind of what's happening with the vacant part of the space, or kind of how you're going to interact with the space, you know, like if I was a client and I came in for a massage, you know, is there a changing room? Is there just like, you said it's just like one room?
Right.
And the rest is, is it the vacant, like sealed off? I'm just kind of trying to envision how that's going to work.
Right, so it used to be a hair salon with the massage space in the back. So right now, that hair salon is not currently rented out. So as a client, I'd walk you through to the back room. I would lock the door for both our safety. While massages are in session, the door will completely be locked. At this time, I'm not, I don't have any plans as, for a receptionist, because I'm assuming that the salon that takes that space will use that up, but yeah, I mean, just, and then I take you to the rooms, to the treatment room. There's actually already a sink and shower in that space, so I would do a short interview, just to find out your basic needs, what you're coming in for that day, and then I would leave the room. You would get, you know, get comfortable on the table, and then I would re-enter the room, and I would stay in the room and wash my hands as needed during the service. So and then I just leave at the end of the service. You would, you know, get up and leave me back out in the hall area.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Deputy Liquor Commissioner?
Trustee Nero?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I got it. One more comment. I think we had discussions with the owner when he bought it. His initial, here comes Tom- His initial, here comes Tom up there, I beat you to it, his initial um comment was that he wanted to reopen the uh hair salon, but uh with the therapeutic massage, and I think the therapeutic massage came first, but Tom could probably explain it better.
The mayor's spot on, uh we met with the owner last week, Anna Marina, we talked, I've I've already interviewed her, met with her already. She will leave in the back part of the room, she'll have the empty space until it's uh it's filled. The building has been purchased by the same owner of Moscow, Moskova Cafe, Anthony Kavalec, I believe it is, and so she's been in touching with him. Interesting, Simonovic, to answer to your question, there are specific requirements in the massage license requirements that she has to meet, showers, bathrooms, everything. So I've explained to her that she needs to go through that to make sure that she's in compliance, because there could be a cost plumbing and everything like that that would, she may may change her mind. She's aware of all that, and that our code and fits expect, code enforcement inspectors will do an inspection, make sure she's in compliance with the ordinance before we grant the business license.
That answers my question, thank you so much.
I figured I'd come up, but as as far as the plan, the plan is right now, I talked to her about it, she'll be in the back, she'll walk her customers through, there'll be no backdoor or anything, she'll be coming in through the front, she hopes to advertise, and then once the the hair salons or whatever is put in there, she will work with the owner that way, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments?
Thanks for choosing Westmont, sounds like a unique opportunity, I think, for to start a new business, a smaller space, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, after all these years, I I'm really glad to even have the opportunity, so appreciate all your time uh this evening, thank you, boy.
I think we just need a quick roll call on trustee Guzo's uh.
Let's go.
Correct.
Trustee Guzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Okay, thank you, moving on. Uh B, B one permit, insurance business and offices at thirty-eight North Cass. Board to consider an ordinance approving a B one development permit to Pitser Insurance to operate an insurance business and offices to operate at thirty-eighth North Cass Avenue. Director Sylvester.
So this is the second B one permit request on the agenda tonight, again, for a business that wishes to move into our downtown. This happens to be an insurance agency business operated by Nick Pitser of Pitser Insurance, who's with us and will come up in a moment. Uh this is the space that some of you may be familiar with, it's currently occupied by L K Media Group. It's currently set up for a variety of uses, but it's predominantly set up for flex office space, and so this would not really be any change of use, it would just be a State Farm Insurance Agency office use as opposed to the the current office configuration that L K Media has set up in there. So I'll leave it at that for background, and then invite up Mr. Pitser.
I want to reference this, you know, scroll up and down.
Appreciate that. Uh thank you, board, for having me, good evening. Uh thank you, Bruce, for getting me on the agenda. Yes, I am looking to relocate my State Farm Agency to thirty-eight North Cass, mainly for two reasons. Uh one, I have a ten-year sublease that is expiring shortly, and I've always dreamed of owning my own business, mainly for the reasons of, over time, being able to reinvest capital and revenue back into that business and kind of build that how I, you know, how I see it, which I haven't been able to do. Um I've been a State Farm agent since March of twenty fifteen in Darien, Illinois, right at Seventy-Fifth and Plainfield, about eight minutes south of here. Growing my agency, I've always believed in really kind of giving back to the community as much as possible, kind of that giver's gain mentality. I've done that successfully throughout the years by uh being really, really involved, starting with the Darien Chamber of Commerce. I was a board of director from about twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. Currently on a Darien Rotarian, current president-elect, and recently an appointed Economic Development Committee member for the city, where I volunteer my time. Um I currently have four full-time staff, um I usually have one part-time staff, usually through the high school, kind of like part-time work after school. And yeah, any questions?
Thank you for choosing Westmont.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it, we've got a lot of committees and uh clubs here too, you could hopefully join as well and be a part of.
Appreciate that.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Guzo?
On the question? All right, here and done, roll call.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Guzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, congrats.
Thank you.
Yep, best of luck.
Okay, moving right on, item C, increase available Class V liquor licenses. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of available Class V liquor licenses by one for Amazon Retail LLC, DBA Amazon Fresh at thirty West Sixty-Third Street. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern.
So if I could take a personal thank you all for your thoughts and and prayers, and it really was appreciated for my sister and I, and I know the mayor's someplace watching, so I will, thank you, Mayor and Village Board, thank you, good evening. A board is asked to consider an ordinance, or Amazon Retail LLC doing businesses, Amazon Fresh, thirty West Sixty-Third Street, submitted an application for a Class V liquor license for sale of alcohol for off-site consumption with occasional product sampling events outlined in the Class V liquor license description. A background review indicates that Amazon Retail LLC and its managers are eligible to receive a liquor license if approved. The license increase allows the liquor commissioner to issue liquor license to Amazon Retail LLC if he so chooses to do so. With me tonight, behind me is Ari Monaco, she's an attorney for Amazon, and so her and I have been in tandem with the mayor and staff during this whole process for the past several months. Uh Amazon is looking for a Class V license, which allows for the sale of packaged goods and liquors with the occasional tasting events should they want. The board approved that measure several months ago, allowing all Class V liquor licenses the ability to do that. Uh they are also interested in curbside delivery and home delivery, which we've kind of discussed in the past, but this is now allowed as of January first of twenty twenty-two. Uh the governor recently signed legislation in allowing that, but more importantly, since COVID ended its effective July first, the owner Liquor Control Commission allows for the sale of liquor and home delivery as well, so they will be permitted for that. Um we talked to the liquor commissioner and the mayor can pipe in, he's in favor of allowing that, and we've told Amazon that we will uh permit them to do that process, as we're working in the process with the village attorney on looking how to address all liquor licenses with packaged goods to be able to do that. If they do, if Amazon does do this, they have their own delivery drivers, they have rules, and they will be subject to those rules, and they also are subject to liquor control commissions, only liquor control regulations on the state law when that kicks in on January first. I've been told, and Ari can correct me if I'm wrong, that all their employees will be BACA trained, we've we've confirmed with that, even all the employees in the store will be BACA trained to ensure that there's no giving of alcohol to minors or anything like that. Last week, we were lucky enough to have an onsite visit when the main concern was their alcohol sales and storage, and how is that accomplished? Um to assure the board, there'll be a liquor portion in the store, it will be gated for entrance and exit, they will have an employee on duty anytime the store is open, someone wants to get into the liquor area, they have to provide identification, it's going to be checked, and they'll be allowed to go in, and people will be allowed to go out. Again, all their employees will be BACA trained, and my concern was there is that I go in, I get liquor, I take it out, and I give it to somebody else in the store, which can happen anywhere, so that's why all their employees, whether they're associated with liquor or the meat counter, from what we've told, they will be BACA trained. They anticipate opening in October.
Hey.
Okay, October, yes, and uh I along with Ari, we had anticipated to have the general manager here, uh his name is Lionel Triplet, uh but he's unavailable today, so Ari and I said we've been working well, answer any questions the board may have. We're kind of limited into what um the on their operations, we can, it's gonna be a retail food store, but as far the, as far as the liquor operations, uh mayor and staff and I are comfortable with their plans and how they will operate liquor sales.
And Tom, I I guess I can add in that we've we went over this in great detail with John and Tom and and the manager, and I think it's uh all gonna be done very professionally, and I believe, Tom, our Class V liquor license allows any of those establishments to have home delivery.
Yes, as of back in COVID, when COVID started, the state gave us the permission, if the local liquor commissioner authorizes it, stores could, if they have off-site sales, can do home delivery and curbside, um and the mayor is continuing that practice after COVID, when the COVID regulations ended, I believe in June, um that practice stopped, but then the state started it back up again, and again, the governor passed legislation, but it won't take effect until January first. So in the meantime, we have the liquor control commission's authorization, and we have the mayor's authorization to allow it, and as long as a business has vocal, the state and local like permissions for packaged goods sales on their license, like some restaurants, the uptown restaurants also have that as well, they can partake in that if they so choose.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor, and I want to.
I'm sorry, if there are anything you wanted to add?
No, that was great, Amazon's just very excited to come, I can assure you that. Um and yeah, basically retail grocery store, packaged alcohol sales, um you don't need to be an Amazon member, like have a Prime membership or anything like that to use the store, it's just an additional kind of access, kind of throughout, it just makes it a little bit quicker, but regardless, you don't have to have an Amazon account, you can just walk in and shop.
Great, well, I think we're equally as excited to see it open, and if there's anybody that could do it right, it would be Amazon, so.
And and with the manager and I and the mayor, I mean, when we saw the onsite, they're still in the process of doing a lot of things, it it's very impressive, it is very, I think you will be impressed when you walk in that front door, we were, and there's nothing in there yet, so.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
You failed to mention the thousand cameras that are watching every movement.
Yeah, well, and and for the police, yeah, we talked about it, for the police chief, from the moment you walk in the store, uh they can track you everywhere you go, and then my question was for the police department, there are outside cameras, let's say something happens, it's recorded twenty-four seven, and the police department will have access to that, so you've seen in this crazy world lately, something may happen out on Sixty-Third Street, the police can go and look at their cameras and see if they have it, but yes, as Ari and the mayor said, you, they'll track, they can track anybody through the whole store from the moment they walk in to the moment they leave.
And that wasn't an exaggeration, that there might be that many sensor cameras, I mean, what are there, there's forty or fifty in each aisle?
I didn't count, but I was just told, yeah, they could track you, so it was, yeah.
Can I ask about that?
Yeah.
So to have all those cameras, does that mean, you know, like the home delivery, to me, and there's lawyers in the room now, the the risk for home delivery seems to be pretty high, but I'm sure that there is paperwork that says, you know, there's limited liability and all that of what happens at home, but then they have all these cameras in stores, and you know, in the store like that, you know, say nobody else has them, you know, Jewel has cameras, but do they have a hundred cameras in every aisle, no. I'm just wondering, is why is Amazon is a new model, why would they feel that they need to have all that camera? Is it, it's not retail theft, is it, it's?
Um I can't personally speak on behalf of that.
Yeah.
I'm mostly just involved in the liquor licensing, but also the cameras do, they're more for, as well as security, but a tracker for shopping.
Tracking the product.
Well, that's what I'm suspecting that that's what it's for.
Right, so that's why there's numerous, um but yeah, I can't really personally speak on that.
I'm excited, I'm excited to go there, even though I'll be on film.
Right.
I'll wear a hat.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't see what the pictures look like, so, you know, I don't know, but yeah, what Ari mentioned, but we've just been reassured, my concern was, will all that footage be available, police department, and we've been told it will.
Great.
Thank you.
We enter, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Simonovic?
Any other comments, here and done, roll call.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Guzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Motion passes, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right on, D, award of bid proposal, twenty twenty-one, Sixty-Third Street, Water Main Extension. Board to consider an ordinance awarding the bid proposal from Swallow Construction Corporation for the two thousand twenty-one, Sixty-Third Street Water Main Extension Project, and authorizing a contract consistent with the bid documents. Director Ramsey?
Thank you, trustee Nero, uh the village accepted bid proposals from seven contractors from the twenty twenty-one, Sixty-Third Street Water Main Extension Project. A little bidder with Swallow Construction Corp. with a little bid of three hundred and two thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents, which was approximately thirty percent below the entering estimate of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars. This Water Main Extension will tie in Richmond Street with Western Avenue along Sixth Street, south side of that street. This will eliminate one dead-end Water Main on Western, and also provide water for future development on Sixty-Third. Staff does recommend awarding the bid to Swallow Construction Corp.
Okay, thank you, Director Ramsey, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Guzo?
On the question, any comments, questions for Mike?
Trustee Nero?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I, it's probably not a related question, but the Sixty-Third Richmond Project is starting to take shape, uh which the Water Main's gonna be right in that area, are they, how close are they to be completed?
The Stormwater Project, they're looking at another four to five weeks to be done. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, any other questions or comments, here and done, roll call.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Guzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, moving on. Letter E, engineering services agreement, again, twenty twenty-one, Sixty-Third Street Water Main Extension. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Baxter and Woodman Engineering for Phase Three construction services for the Sixty-Third Street Water Main Extension Project. Director Ramsey?
Yes, this is the construction services for the Phase Three part of this project. We're requesting approval of some of thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for the construction and engineering for the village project on Sixty-Third Street Water Main Extension. Staff does recommend approval of the proposal for that amount.
Thank you, Mike, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Little?
On the question, any comments, questions for Mike, here and done, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, a couple more, Mike. Letter, letter F, engineering agreement, twenty twenty-two, North Water Tower Project Plan and Loan Assistance. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Baxter and Woodman Engineering to prepare an Illinois Environmental Protection Agency project plan and assistance with the I E P A Public Water Supply Loan Program Loan Application Package for the North Elevated Water Storage Tank Project. That's a long sentence. All right, Mike, Director Ramsey?
Thank you, trustee Nero, yes, the new uh new proposed North Water Tower will be located at the back lot of the Westmont High School near the football field. We are applying for a Illinois State Revolving Fund to finance this new tower. Uh we're requesting the sum of three-two thousand, the assistance uh for this loan project. Uh staff recommends approving the proposal in the amount of that thirty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mike, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Guzo?
On the question, any comments, questions for Mike? I just had one, Mike, this is on the north, northwest side of the football field, just the specific location.
It's directly north of the football field, if you can imagine where the goalpost is, it was, it's where the old tennis courts were, um that's the location, we've already installed the Water Main Extension from old clients to that property, and now we're just working on trying to get the funding to do the rest of the project.
Got it, great, yeah, those are old and and broken down, those tennis courts, so great spot, uh okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Guzo?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. G, award of bid proposal, twenty twenty-one, M F T Resurfacing Project. Board to consider an ordinance awarding the bid proposal from Schroder Asphalt Services, Inc. for the village's twenty twenty-one M F T Resurfacing Project, M F T number twenty-one dash zero-zero-one-one-one dash zero-zero R S, and authorizing a contract consistent a contract consistent with the bid documents. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, trustee Nero. The village accepted bid proposal from five contractors for the 2021 MFT Resurfacing Project. A little bidder was Schroder, Schroder Asphalt Services with a low bid of $946,394.07, which is approximately 31% below the engineering estimate of $1,380,892.25. Staff recommends awarding the contract to Schroder Asphalt Services with that low bid.
Thank you, Director Ramsey. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker. On the question? Any comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
Question? Yes, trustee. This one's for Director Ramsey. Have we started the process where we have the company come in and survey our streets? Like we've done that, I don't know, when was that, 10 years ago? Maybe less?
Correct. We do that every five years, and we just did it in 2020, and I presented that, that results from that when I, a couple of public works committee meetings ago, but we were just.
The meeting I missed, right? Yeah, okay.
We were 85% of our streets were really good shape, and 15% were the ones that need to be resurfaced, you know, as soon as possible, and that's the list we're going off of, permanent wood streets we choose to resurface.
This project is generated from that list.
Okay, and that report's available.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Roll call?
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.